Tuesday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, Village Board of Trustees meeting to order. Could we get a roll call, please?
Trustee Postuma.
Here.
Trustee Braden?
Yes.
Trustee Sifler?
Here.
Trustee Fisher?
Here.
Trustee Burns?
Here.
Trustee Banky.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business is the approval of the minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of November fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Move to approve them.
Go ahead.
Second. No, sorry.
We have a motion and a second.
Yes.
Trustee Postuma motion, Trustee Burns seconded. Any corrections, additions, or deletions? No? Roll call, please.
Trustee Postuma?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Sifler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Banky.
Wonderful. The minutes are approved. Moving on to Village President's report. A few things to note. First and foremost, tonight we'll be reviewing the proposed twenty twenty-six annual operating budget for the general and water sewer funds, as well as the village's five-year capital improvement plan and master infrastructure plan. Over the past several months, myself and the board have been working closely with staff to help shape and pull forward this proposal with a focus on long-term financial stability and resident priorities. The full budget will be available for public inspection by Wednesday, November twenty-sixth, with the public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, December ninth, before the board considers it. A continued priority of this board is prudent fiscal and financial management. Many will recall that Hinsdale's AAA bond rating received a negative outlook in two thousand and eight when reserves fell below policy thresholds. Through disciplined planning, the rating returned to stable in two thousand and twelve and remains so today, including reaffirmation this year. The twenty twenty-six budget maintains our policy of a minimum twenty-five percent general fund reserve while increasing resources for other pressing priorities such as new pedestrian safety enhancements and economic development efforts. Total operating revenues for twenty twenty-six are projected at twenty-four point eight million, a one point five percent increase over twenty twenty-five, driven by stable property tax growth and continued strength in sales and income tax collections. These projections remain conservative and do not yet reflect the several new restaurants and retailers they're expected to open in twenty twenty-six. Operating expenditures totaled twenty-three point five million, a six point five percent increase from twenty twenty-five, largely due to personnel-related adjustments, pension, and benefit costs. Even with these increases, village-controlled operating expenses decreased slightly, reflecting continued discipline in managing day-to-day costs and enabling us to move away from other administrative fees such as animal registrations without compromising core services. The twenty twenty-six capital improvement plan funds approximately seven point four million in capital projects without issuing new debt. This pay-as-you-go strategy strengthens long-term infrastructure, supports our water and roadway system, and avoids additional financial burden on residents. We look forward to hearing more from staff and Trustee Postuma, who will be presenting this item on today's agenda. Moving on, as part of our commitment to strong neighborhoods, we are also advancing short-term steps that improve daily quality of life and safety for residents. So on tonight's agenda, we included recommendations for a new four-way stop at Walnut and Elm Street, as well as at Hickory and Lincoln Streets. These changes follow staff review and resident feedback, and they support our broader focus of slowing cut-through traffic, creating safer crossings, and ensuring our residential streets remain walkable and family-friendly. Along the same lines of neighborhood awareness and safety, I want to remind residents that all solicitors in Hinsdale must register with the police department and wear a village-issued blue vest when going door-to-door. This helps protect residents and allows our officers to quickly verify who is authorized to solicit in the village. As a reminder, if you encounter someone without proper identification, please contact the police department. Residents may also pick up a no solicitor sticker or sign up on the no soliciting list online on the village website. With winter approaching, I also want to highlight the village's senior and disability snow shoveling referral program. This program connects older adults and residents with disabilities to volunteers willing to help with snow removal, a small but meaningful way to support neighborhoods who may need neighbors who may need assistance. Volunteers can sign up online and are matched directly with residents. As snowfall increases, we encourage everyone to avoid pushing snow into the street and to clear sidewalks where possible. These simple actions go a long way in keeping pathways safe for pedestrians, families, and students walking to school. Next, turning to the strength of our local economy, small business season runs from November twenty-ninth through December thirty-first. Our business community is a vital part of the fabric of Hinsdale, supporting families, anchoring our downtown, and contributing to the character and energy of our village. Supporting them means supporting the health and vibrancy of Hinsdale itself. And with that, we are fortunate to have Jill Sunderson, our EDC chair, here to accept a proclamation that I'll now read. Small business season. Whereas, small businesses are the backbone of the village of Hinsdale, representing the heart and soul of our community and serving as the foundation for our local economy. And whereas, this holiday season, the village of Hinsdale joins communities across the nation in celebrating small business season, a time to shop local, dine local, and support the entrepreneurs, family-owned shops, and service providers who make our village unique. And whereas, small business season reminds us that every purchase has a purpose, to support our family, friends, and neighbors, and ensure our business community remains vibrant, charming, and full of life. And whereas, the village of Hinsdale encourages residents and visitors to make every purchase purposeful by exploring Hinsdale's many local boutiques, restaurants, and specialty shops throughout the holiday season and beyond. And whereas, together, we can make a big difference by doing something small, choosing to shop Hinsdale first. Now therefore, be or proclaim that I, Greg Hart, President of the Village of Hinsdale, do hereby proclaim November twenty-ninth through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, a small business season in the village of Hinsdale, and encourage all residents to celebrate this meaningful time of year by remembering that every purchase has a purpose. Shop small, shop Hinsdale. With that, I'll turn it over to Jill if you have any remarks. Appreciate you being here.
We're very excited to be here this holiday season.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Here, I'll give it to you right there.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
We're reading it tomorrow.
Please do. Read it on our behalf.
We will.
And thank you for all you do. Yeah, special time here for our businesses.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Last time on the President's report, I promised everyone, I know this is lengthy, but before we enter the regular agenda, I want to close with an update on the Burlington Park Pavilion Initiative, an item that continues to generate significant interest in understandably a range of viewpoints across the community. Because resident engagement is extremely important to this board, we did issue a community survey to hear directly from the public on the proposed pavilion, a structure that would mark America's two-hundred-fiftieth birthday and serve as a lasting community asset for concert events and gatherings. More than two-hundred-and-twenty residents completed the survey since its launch nearly two weeks ago, underscoring how much of our community cares about Burlington Park. A preview of the survey results, which will be shared with the broader community, at least a summary of them, seventy-two percent support a permanent pavilion in Burlington Park. A majority prefer a design consistent with the memorial building or the train station. Residents view an approximate twenty-by-thirty-foot size as appropriate, but had concerns about going larger than that. And top priorities for this pavilion, as rated by the residents who took the survey, would include support for live music, architectural harmony, and flexible year-round usability. Feedback also included diverse views from preserving the park's character to considering alternative configurations and ensuring robust transparency throughout the process. I want to emphasize that we take this feedback very seriously. We are still in the early design and review process, and the survey is only the first of multiple opportunities for residents to engage and provide input. To help guide the work, as I mentioned previously at the last meeting, I established a review committee consisting of two village trustees, a Parks and Recreation Commission representative, and a Historic Preservation Commission representative. Their responsibilities will include reviewing concepts, addressing concerns, and ensuring multiple viewpoints are represented throughout the process. In addition to the review committee, the pavilion will go through the village's formal plan review and approval process, just like any other project of the scale, including public bodies like the Plan Commission and the Village Board. The village is now working with an architect on initial design concepts, which will be shared publicly, including renderings, so that residents can clearly understand potential scale, style, and placement as we approach the release of an RFP. As those designs evolve, community feedback will continue to be welcome. So in short, residents will continue to have a meaningful voice before any final decisions are made. To support summer event planning, the target installation date is still June first if the final design reflects community values and receives this board's approval. Our commitment remains to a thoughtful, transparent process that enhances Burlington Park, respects its character, and benefits residents year-round. That concludes my President's report. Before moving on, I did just want to wish all residents a happy Thanksgiving. I know the holidays are upon us, and as we begin to head into December, I hope to see everyone at the Village Tree Lighting on Friday, December fifth, at five P.M., and the subsequent Christmas Walk, a longstanding tradition in our town that brings families and neighbors together. And with that, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is citizens petitions pertaining to items on the agenda. Does anyone have any public comment? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is first readings, and I'll recognize Chair Postuma.
Thanks, Greg. So item six A is the twenty twenty-six budget. Staff has prepared a comprehensive document for the proposed budget, which is generally comprised of three components. There's the twenty twenty-six annual operating budget, there is the capital improvement plan for the next five years, and I should mention that this is now a separate fund, separate from the general fund, and also the master infrastructure plan for twenty twenty-six, which also now contains a longer twenty-year projection as part of that plan. The operating budget includes individual budgets for all of village's sixteen funds. The general fund is considered the primary fund of the village and incorporates all the typical government services that you would expect, such as public safety, public services, community development, parks and rec, and administration. The village also has a water and sewer fund, which accounts for the operation of the public water and sewer utility. Staff is going to provide highlights of these two primary funds this evening. The twenty twenty-six fund is projected to end the year in compliance with the village's twenty-five percent reserve policy, and this is something that rating agencies desire for us to maintain our AAA credit rating. As Greg mentioned, the village is investing seven point four million dollars in capital improvements this year, which is offset partially by six hundred and sixty thousand dollars in grant funding, which staff every year always is trying to get as much as possible. In terms of large infrastructure improvements, the village is going to spend about two point three million dollars for MIP projects. This will include the annual resurfacing and maintenance program, the second phase of the neighborhood traffic and pedestrian safety program, and various other annual programs. The water and sewer fund also includes an additional one point three million dollars in capital projects, which includes five hundred thousand dollars for the second year of an annual water main and sewer lining program. Village staff has developed these documents and has reviewed them with the trustees and members of the Finance Commission in separate meetings. A few changes have been made to these numbers within the budget as a result of these reviews, and they have been distributed to the board and reflected in tonight's presentation. Now, after tonight's first read and board discussion, there will be a public hearing that will occur on December ninth, that will be followed by a second read, and the budget is contemplated to be adopted at that time. Now, as you might remember, earlier this year, we adopted the provisions of the Budget Officer System, and the annual budget will serve both as the management tool throughout the year, as well as the legal spending authority of the village. There will be no separate appropriations ordinance early next year, as we've had in the past. And I should also mention now that Village Manager Kathleen Gargano is serving as the statutory budget officer pursuant to that budget officer statute. So staff now is going to give a brief presentation, sort of outlining the budget in greater detail, and obviously, thanks to all the staff for your hard work in getting this budget completed. So look forward to hearing what you have to say.
Thank you. Thank you, President Hart. Thank you, Trustee Postuma. I can go home now. You've covered it all. Thank you for those opening remarks. Staff are very pleased to present the highlights of the draft twenty twenty-six Village of Hinsdale budget, which, as noted, includes all operations of the village for calendar year twenty twenty-six. The budget maintains all of the village's current existing service levels, as well as a few initiatives that will be highlighted later in the presentation. This document is the culmination of many months of work, beginning around June of this year, and involving every level of the village, from the board, the departments, many multiple levels of staff. Everybody's put a lot of time into preparing this document. And in addition to the operating budget, this document contains the five-year rolling capital improvement plan, as noted, and a new twenty-year MIP projection. Both year one of the CIP and year one of the MIP are incorporated into the twenty twenty-six budget amounts. While the village has sixteen individual budgeted funds, we typically focus our presentation on the two major funds, which include the general fund and the water sewer, which is actually made up of three sub-funds. The general fund is our primary operating fund and contains all of those typical services that Trustee Postuma noted, such as public safety and public services. And the water and sewer fund accounts for the operations and maintenance of our water sewer utility, and is designed in the same model as a business enterprise fund where it's supposed to be self-sustaining. The five-year CIP accounts for all of our departmental capital spending. These are basically items greater than ten thousand dollars that typically are non-recurring. And again, as Trustee Postuma noted, beginning in twenty twenty-six, we're reporting these expenses in their own fund called the Capital Improvement Plan Fund. And finally, the MIP accounts for our major infrastructure improvements, such as roadway and utility improvements, and we've created a new twenty-year projection of future MIP expenditures, which assume a pay-as-you-go funding model. As you all know, the village has had a longstanding policy to maintain a fund balance reserve in the general fund of at least twenty-five percent. This was formalized about a couple of years ago in December twenty twenty-three, when the board actually adopted the general fund and water sewer fund reserve policy. In keeping with that policy, amounts that are in excess of the twenty-five percent may be used for a variety of purposes, such as transferring to the MIP, transferring to the CIP, supplementing annual police or fire pension contributions, transferring to the water fund, or held in the general fund simply to offset possible unforeseen economic downturns. When the twenty twenty-five budget was adopted, we had estimated that we would end the general fund at an operating reserve of about five point six million, which is just slightly above our target reserve of twenty-five percent. And within that number, we had contemplated a contribution to the CIP of just over two million and to the MIP of about two point nine million. However, due to the positive twenty-four actual and twenty-five estimated performance, the village was actually enabled to exceed that goal and therefore fund future capital projects without the need to issue any debt in twenty twenty-six. Our estimated twenty twenty-five ending general fund operating reserve is predicted at about forty-three percent, which again exceeds that twenty-five percent target, which is that critical AAA bond rating metric. Those enhanced performance is what is basically also enabling us to increase our transfers in twenty twenty-six. So in forming the twenty-six budget, staff has evaluated individually roughly twelve hundred line items within our budget. On the revenue side, the culmination of all of these revenues is yielding an overall increase of about one point five percent, being very conservative in our estimates. And on the expense side, altogether, the line items are yielding a projected increase of about six point five percent, as was noted. We've also included transfers to the CIP of two point seven million and to the MIP of two million, and we project to end twenty twenty-six at our operating reserve target of twenty-five percent. Taking a more in-depth look at our general fund revenues, you can see, hopefully, from the pie chart, our largest share of revenues is coming from property taxes, which is about thirty-nine percent, followed by sales taxes at sixteen, and then state income tax at about twelve. This is consistent with where the village has been in prior years. These top three sources make up roughly sixty-eight percent of our general fund operating revenues. And by their very nature, they are not revenues, being a non-home role community, that we can exercise much control over, so we really have little to no ability to increase them. They're, you know, subject to the economy, and property taxes are subject to being non-home role. Regarding property taxes, despite the fact that this is the village's largest revenue source, from the taxpayer standpoint, the village is only receiving about seven cents of every dollar that a taxpayer spends. As depicted in the chart, if you see on the top there, roughly seventy-nine percent goes to the local school districts, and then the remainder is spread out over several other taxing bodies, including the county, the library, et cetera. Also, since the village is a non-home role community, property tax increases for us are capped annually by the consumer price index, plus an amount for our new growth, and that's also known as the tax cap. The CPI for our tax levy year twenty twenty-five, which is going to fund next year's budget, is only two point nine percent, shown there at the bottom of that chart. This generates roughly three hundred and sixty-nine thousand more in property taxes than we received in twenty twenty-five. However, as we'll discuss on an upcoming slide, the increase in the village's share of property taxes does not even cover the increase to our police and fire pension contributions, of which most of our, it's all being funded by property taxes. So shifting gears now to expenses, you can see the weight of general fund expenses for twenty twenty-six allocated amongst our various operating departments. And as in prior years, and is also typical amongst most local governments, the lion's share of expenses are going towards public safety, with roughly fifty-six percent of our general fund budget dedicated to police and fire operations. And for operating expenses only, no capital, that totals about thirteen million dollars. On our next slide, you can see for the same operating expense totals, but when presented by category, the majority of our operating expenses, as was noticed, is going towards personnel, salary, and benefit costs, roughly seventy-three percent of our operating budget. The next biggest piece of the pie is contractual services, which is way down at fifteen percent, and that contains items such as legal expenses, our outsourced information technology contract, utility costs, emergency dispatching services for police and fire, and recreation programming. Our salaries line item includes all of our wages for full-time, part-time, and seasonal employees, as well as overtime. And as shown in this chart, you can see over the last, since like two thousand and nine, the village has made several restructuring recommendations, particularly in the finance department and fire department. And from the last year, twenty-five to twenty-six, we're actually going to have a full-time equivalent account decrease of point six-one employees. Even with that being the case, the fire department will now be fully staffed in twenty twenty-six with our recent three hires, and that includes one over hire that the village board previously approved. On the benefit side, the key components that are driving these costs up are statutorily required pension contributions, payroll taxes, and insurance premiums. This category experienced the largest percent increase of all the categories in twenty twenty-six at eleven point six percent, and dollar-wise, it's roughly six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Of that amount, sixty percent of that is related to the increase in police and fire pension contributions. For our police and fire pensions, the village annually hires an independent actuary who calculates what the village has to contribute into those pension funds. The actuary is using certain assumptions in their valuations to make that calculation, among them investment rate of return, our payroll growth, mortality rates of the members and retirees, and things of that nature. However, these assumptions that are used in the valuation are not determined by the village anymore, as previously was the case, but instead, now there are two statewide consolidated boards, as you're aware of, one for police and one for fire. And those statewide assumptions that we're required to use don't necessarily reflect the actual experience of the village of Hinsdale, but those are the parameters that we're bound to use in our valuations. So based on those assumptions, and following the statutory minimum funding amount, which gets to an annual calculation, an annual contribution that gets us to a ninety percent funded amount by the year twenty forty, at January first of this year, we were at about sixty percent funded for police and nearly sixty-three percent for fire, both of which have shown improvements over the prior year's valuation. And just for kind of averaging, the state averages are roughly sixty-three percent and sixty-seventh fire, so we're right in that ballpark of the state average. Both of our pension funds have seen increases in the annual contributions for twenty twenty-six. In total, it's roughly three hundred and eighty-five thousand. And as I noted with the property taxes, those are only going up three hundred and sixty-nine, so we've got a sixteen thousand dollar shortage, basically, when you factor in the property tax increase versus the pension increase. What that means basically is that fewer property tax dollars are going towards our operations, as we have to channel more of those towards the required pension contributions. A couple other items of note for the general fund. As previously mentioned, we annually contribute to the MIP fund to supplement the village's annual infrastructure needs, and two million dollars is going to be the annual transfer amount for twenty twenty-six. And then for the CIP, the twenty twenty-six transfer is planned for two point seven million. The base annual transfer amount since twenty twenty-four has been one point six million. An additional eight hundred thousand dollars is planned to offset the cost of a fire snorkel apparatus, so that the village can pay cash for that vehicle when we receive it in twenty twenty-six. And for the last three years, the village has been planning for this, and we've increased the transfer to the CIP then for three years in a row to be able to accomplish this. And then finally, an additional three hundred thousand is also added to the twenty twenty-six transfer to help supplement the CIP for the future capital projects. The village anticipates receiving roughly six hundred and sixty thousand dollars in capital grants in twenty twenty-six. It's going to help offset these projects, with six hundred thousand of those earmarked for pool improvements, including the baby pool replacement, another fifty thousand dollars towards the KLM elevator project, and ten thousand dollars towards police body camera storage. And as noted, village staff is continuously seeking additional grant opportunities to help fund these projects over time. Lastly, in prior years, or as in prior years, the budget contains a contingency line item, which protects us against outside factors that might arise that, you know, are beyond the village's control. This amount was maintained at two hundred thousand dollars for the twenty twenty-six budget, same amount as in twenty five. All right, move into water sewer. So as we noted, that's our other primary operating fund. It actually consists of three funds. There's an operations and maintenance fund, a water capital fund, and then a water bond fund that's paying off the debt for the water fund. As of the end of twenty twenty-six, we are projecting the O and M fund is going to have an ending reserve of two point two million, and the water capital, an ending reserve of about five point five million, and then the water bond will also have a very small fund balance remaining as well. Predominant revenues of these funds are coming from the customer usage from our water utility. So water and sewer charges now are based on actual consumption. We have a four percent water rate increase projected on both our revenue and expense side, which keeps pace with what we're anticipating the DuPage Water Commission, or DWC, is going to issue us in the spring, which this is also the same percentage that several other municipalities are factoring into their budgets as well. When the actual rate is released by DWC, which won't happen until about April, of course, we're going to bring this back to the village board for consideration of, you know, if the village is going to roll that into our current rates. And then there's also an IMIF fee, which partially offsets the cost of water capital improvements. That is a flat amount, which is fifteen dollars bi-monthly, keeping the same amount for twenty twenty-six at this time. On the expense side for water, the largest water fund expense by far is the purchase of our wholesale water from DuPage Water Commission, and at five point two-five million dollars, that accounts for sixty-two percent of our water fund expenses. And as noted, we have planned both a four percent increase on the revenue and on the expense side. Of course, it is different than, you know, we'll be letting the board know. Other expenses in the water fund include one point three million in capital. One of the new initiatives of the village, which is also a state and federal mandate, is lead service line replacement. So in our twenty twenty-six budget, we've included two hundred thousand dollars of engineering expenses, which is going to allow us to design the lead service replacements for the next three years. The actual replacement project will start in twenty twenty-seven, and it's estimated that that cost is going to be about six hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year over a ten-year period. This chart just illustrates the volatility in water purchases over the last eighteen years from DuPage Water Commission, and it's basically why the village implemented the flat IMIF capital fee in twenty nineteen, where you can see that's where there was a large drop from twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen. Similar steep drops also occurred in twenty fifteen and sixteen. This just is illustrative of the fact that it's difficult for us to predict every year if there's going to be enough customer usage to generate enough revenue for both operating and capital costs, even with rate increases. All right. As noted earlier, our capital improvement plan accounts for non-MIP capital projects. So these are things like vehicle replacements, facility improvements, and things of those nature. They are now being accounted for in their own fund in twenty twenty-six, and generally, they're greater than ten thousand dollars in their non-recurring type of expenses. And generally, they're greater than $10,000 in their non-recurring type of expenses. Within our CIP document, which you received previously, these items are all grouped together by their respective departments. And then all of the items in the water sewer are also included. Over the five-year span of the capital improvement plan, we have about $20.9 million in departmental expenses, plus another 4.7 million in water fund expenses. Within 2026, staff has identified 7.4 million in capital projects. Funding is provided by a combination of grants, the annual transfers from the general fund, and then some smaller sources such as PEG fees, but no external financing. This is definitely a testament to the leadership of the board in that you have enabled the village to continue to build fund balance and do this on a pay-as-you-go basis without having to offer any kind of debt financing. And that's also the current MIP funding mechanism as well. The 7.4 million that's budgeted for 2026 is depicted in these charts, both on a department basis and on a category basis. By department, Public Services has the largest scope of projects in 2026 at roughly 29%, and followed by the Fire Department at 25%. By type of asset, 47% of the capital projects are going to be spent on building or facility improvements, followed by 29% on vehicle replacements. And then the major items of the CIP for '26, you can see, are itemized in this slide. Generally, these are everything that are greater than $120,000. And this list here constitutes roughly 6.5 million of the total 7.4 million budgeted. Items that are funded partially by a grant are noted in red. And those include the pool, the KLM elevator, and the body camera storage that I mentioned. And again, all of these items will be paid for in cash. There is no debt or external financing required in 2026. Then moving to the MIP, there are three funds that together comprise the MIP plan and account for all of the major infrastructure projects of the village. And that's the motor fuel tax fund, the MIP infrastructure projects fund, and the water capital fund. So over the course of the last MIP plan, which spanned the 15 years from 2009 to 2024, plus the one add-on year of 2025, there's been a multitude of projects completed, with some of the more significant projects noted here on this slide. During 2025, the village finished the annual asphalt resurfacing program for various streets around the village, as well as the Burr Ridge Water Interconnection Program and the annual sewer lining program. Looking forward to next year, another asphalt resurfacing program is contemplated, plus the next phase of the neighborhood safety study, as well as various other annual programs. Looking at the three funds in the MIP plan in its totality to show the dedicated revenue sources funding these projects, that includes motor fuel taxes, the annual downtown SSA property tax, a portion of the village's utility taxes, all of the village's non-home rule sales tax, and the annual transfer amount from the general fund. Other non-recurring revenues generally include grants as they become available, and then investment income. And then on the expense side, again, these are split between the three funds. In total, for 2026, it's about $2.3 million, with most of it coming out of the MIP infrastructure projects fund there in the center column. So to summarize, the last MIP program, it accomplished the rehabilitation of about 95% of village streets. It replaced 16 males of water, 16 miles of water mains, and replay, excuse me, replaced or relined 19 miles of sewers. The 2026 budget includes a new 20-year long-range projection for the MIP with tentative projects costed out for the next five years. And those are itemized there on the slide, including street resurfacing in 2026, the Sixth Street Project in 2027, of which we are awaiting final grant determination, the Madison Street South Project in '28, Phase 1 of the County Line Road Project in 2029, and then Fourth Street in 2030. And as noted, some of these will be funded by federal grants. So in totality, this is what the MIP looks like after. That is the conclusion of my comments. I'm happy to address any questions of the board.
Wonderful job.
Yes, so Carrie, you had noted, several trustees and President Harder noted that the increase, or the continuation of the increase in our pension obligations. What is the long-term look for those contributions? Do we see any relief in sight?
Well, yes and no. There's currently a lot of bills pending in the legislature that will actually potentially increase some of those pension benefits. Obviously, being, you know, non-home rule and tax capped, they're going to have to give us an ability to fund those benefits. And the likely mechanism for that, which has occurred in the past, is to lengthen that amortization period. So right now, we have to achieve the 90% by 2040. So it's likely they would just extend it maybe to 2050 or 2055, kind of kicking the can down the road. That is what I, it's kind of what's anticipated for, you know, relief, if you will.
But to build on what Carrie said, there are significant bills that we would expect to have to pay close attention to in the spring session.
I know that's something that the village is lobbyist, as well as you Kathleen, and all of us are in concert with our legislative representatives.
Because what was, Matt, what was the, what did you cite originally? That our increase just in pension costs exceeded our total, our total increase this year?
Increase in property taxes.
Increase in property taxes.
Yeah.
All 100% of the increase in pension.
If you, if you look at your, your property tax bill, like under sort of the village, there's like a separate line items for police and fire pension. You know, because we're statutorily required to first fund those out of property taxes. But obviously, we have other sources of revenue. You know, I think we've been very conservative with our revenue expenses in terms of income tax and, and sales tax. You know, based on historical performance, we could have budgeted much higher increases than we didn't. We may have been very conservative based on, you know, previously budgeted amounts. So, you know, and I think that's sort of played out very well over the last few years. We've been very conservative with our revenue assumptions. And we've had surpluses, you know, at the end of the year that we've been able to, to use to fund our, our capital fund and our, and our MIP. And, and, you know, as, as we've seen, those expenses have gone up a lot, right? And, and we're, we're an older community, right? And we're, we're starting to get to that point where there's a lot of things that we are going to have to replace or upgrade. And we just need to be very conscious of that as we're moving ahead. And, and, you know, planning and, and again, being very disciplined and methodical about how we're going to fund all these things going forward.
And I just mentioned it because I don't think average residents have an appreciation of, you know, when you get questions of, why can't we just improve this park some way for a couple hundred thousand dollars, where all the money is actually going to? So, thank you.
And to build on what Trustee Postima said, if you recall, during the COVID area era, we reduced our transfer from the general fund to make sure that we could support the activities because of downturns in certain of the key academic sales tax, for instance. And so we were playing a bit of catch-up on those types of things. And $7.4 million is a very, very aggressive capital replacement. It's a compliment, again, to the board and its philosophies that we can do this on a pay-as-you-go method. But it really is, the bill is coming due, as you said, for many of these infrastructure improvements. And they're not nice to haves, these are must-haves.
But along those same time, parking garage, I think, was $13 million. Oak Street Bridge, there's a lot of other capital improvements that were made also. Okay, thank you.
I appreciate everything that everyone said with respect to just laying it out step by step. I see that $660,000 that we're allocating yearly for the lead and sewer pipe, state mandated maintenance that we're required to do. So we're looking at $6.6 million that we need to pay over 10 years, correct? Okay.
Yeah, and, and the water main replacement went, George, what are we looking at over the 20 years for the water main replacement?
We, over the next 20, it's probably, right now, we're looking at 80 million over 50 years. So if you take like, would that be a quarter of that? So like somewhere between 20 and 30 million in water main.
Eighty, 80 million over 50 years?
Yep.
Okay.
That's what the water study recommended, five phases.
And that's in current $20,000.
That's a good point.
That's the account. When, when, you know, when, when the village was first getting built out, people used lead pipes, you know, to, to transport water. Well, that obviously, you know, we have, we have to replace those pipes. And, and the state is required that we do that.
That was the state of the art in those days.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for all the attention.
We're a mature community, and, and now we've got to, now we've got to deal with, with this aging infrastructure.
When I just want to echo everything that the board said. I know, Carrie, you presented, you did an incredible job building this out. But I know it wasn't just Carrie, it was everyone at this dais right here. So thank you for the hard work and really excellent product for us to now dive into and discuss. But, but thank you for everything that went into it.
I, I would also like to add, thank all the department head staff and the senior staff members in the department, because this really is bottom up. And it takes a lot of time, and it takes them away from their core responsibilities. So I do appreciate it, and to the trustees for their time and attention to this. Matt, thank you, our financial hawk.
Thanks to everybody. We all, we all came to these meetings, and we all provided a lot of input. So yeah, thanks to everybody. And, you know, as, as we mentioned, as part of the new budget officer system, the budget is going to be made available very soon to the public. There's going to be a public hearing, and then we'll have a second read.
And the second read will be after the public hearing on the 9th?
And at the same meeting, yes, yes.
And Trustee Postima, we will have the draft budget online tonight after the meeting.
Okay, perfect.
Any other questions? No?
Thanks again to staff.
Thank you.
Well done. Shall I move to 6B?
I think, I think so. It's obviously a second read on item A, so.
Yes.
Move on to B.
Yes, okay. So 6B is a couple of intergovernmental agreements relating to the O'Hare and Midway Airport's noise compatibility commissions. As, as I'm sure you all know, one of the great things about Hinsdale is that it's very close to our two major airports in Chicago, O'Hare and Midway. But that's also a downside as well, as we're in the path of jet planes coming to and from the airport. And, and we have to deal with the noise from those planes as, as a part of our daily lives. So the City of Chicago Aviation Department, to deal with the noise concerns of neighboring communities, has set up a couple of commissions that are meant to deal with noise and meant to give the neighboring communities kind of a forum to, to talk about them and talk about ways to address the noise from the airports. Both of these commissions were established in 1996. The village joined the two commissions fairly recently in 2022. And there is, like I said, an agreement that governs each of these commissions. And the agreements are expiring at the end of 2025, so just a little over a month. And as a member of the two commissions, we need to approve and enter into those two agreements by the end of this year if we want to continue our membership in the commissions and continue to have the ability to provide input in terms of how the noise from the airports is going to be dealt with. The new agreements have a five-year term, and they are substantially similar to the existing agreements. Alex, did you want to say more about it?
No, you covered it. No material changes between the two agreements besides the extension of another five years from 2026 to 2030.
Any questions from the board?
Just one comment. There was, this became much more material several years ago when Midway changed their flight patterns. And we basically had probably two or three days a month, we would have flights coming from the southwest corner of the village, fly directly over Memorial Building, and then, and then go to the north, or I'm sorry, to the northeast corner of the village. That was a result of whenever winds change in a certain direction, which is a minority amount of the time, Midway has to change that. Well, I recall reading afterwards that this commission came out and did a noise study. And the noise, I was reading through the noise study afterwards that this was done. They, I believe they placed microphones or sound decibel reading devices on the top of the police or fire station. And then the measurements were all made on a comparison to other noise from the village. So their comparison just wasn't on an absolute basis. It was on a comparative basis to the other noise. When you do a comparative base, my point on this is the next time that they come to do any type of noise, we should have the microphones be placed not so close to the Burlington Northern Train Line. Because on top of the police station is probably 100 to 150 feet away from the train line. So their baseline measurement included the freight trains and all the metro trains going by. And I think our baseline measurement should be much further away because only about 10% of the community lives within an earshot of those train lines.
Do we know how often they put mics out to measure that?
We made a special request. So we, I'm happy to provide that information to the Midway Noise Commission and ask for another testing. We, I attend those meetings. We divvied it up, Alex is at O'Hare and I'm at Midway. But one of the things that I continue to point out is when you look at the pattern that is coming in and the communities, the challenge that you have is that when they change the flight pattern, that is controlled by the FAA. And, and so I have suggested that they shift and go over the water and up over the industrial park and make the turn in. I'm trying to get traction on that. I'll let you know how I do. But I can certainly request another.
Something happened like five years ago. Because, I mean, they're, by the way, as Michelle just suggested, you could have put a microphone on my house because it goes right over my house. But I mean, something's happened, and we're getting the runaround or something here.
Right, and, and one of, one of the things is then, I don't have the technical term, but they went to a more computerized version. So there, before pilots could make a decision in a larger area of how they came in, but now they're all in a line. And so whereas maybe two houses this way would have been more impacted, now it's just rapid fire, boom, boom, boom. It also happens, as you said, it's more in the springtime. And as it so happens, more recreational travelers fly out of Midway. So it coincides with spring break and activities like that. It's also a little, it's warmer, so people have windows open and things like that. There's a lot of things that go into it. But yes, you can see the line of planes coming right over.
You can count the seconds between the self-plant.
So. But the village of Hinsdale is advocating on behalf of its residents at the Midway Noise Commission.
Oh, I know, appreciate that, don't get me wrong. The other thing is, I mean, planes fly over at 1:00 in the morning. I hear, I hear planes. And that never happened, I mean, for God's sake. So anyway, I'll shut up.
Take those red eyes.
Any other questions?
Yeah, no, I mean, I was going to suggest consent agenda, although I don't know whether there's any follow-up questions that people want to have at the next meeting about this.
There's no requirement to do two reads on this, is there? Or we'll put it on consent?
No, and materially, we have very little discretion.
Yeah.
We can't negotiate the agreement. Same as the last one, yes.
All right. All right. Good with consent? All right, thank you, Trustee Postima. That moves us to item C under zoning and public safety, Chair Stifler.
Yeah, and I'm going to talk about Agenda Item 6C and Agenda Item 6D together. Both are dealing with stop signs. Both are to approve an ordinance amending Section 6-12-3 and 612-3 Schedule 3, which are four-way stop signs and two-way stopway intersections within the village code. The matter before us this evening pertains to one intersection at Walnut Street and Elm. This is the first one. If you recall, when the food pantry moved from the Memorial Building to the old Hinsdale Humane Society Building, there was discussion surrounding traffic and a potential four-way stop signs at the corner of Elm and Walnut. It's back now. The police department has reviewed crash data that revealed that there have been six right-angle collisions that have occurred in this 36-month duration, which meets the threshold for installation of an all-way stop at this intersection of Walnut and Elm. I think it's important to note here that the police department just doesn't come forward when any time that a resident requests that a stop sign be put up in an intersection. Rather, the police department bases its recommendations to this board on the manual of uniform traffic control devices, which is established under the US Department. which is established under the U.S. Department of Transportation. It basically outlines the warrants and requirements that must be met before, and before installing any traffic control devices and signage. I would note that in two thousand twenty-four, they somewhat changed their criteria so that they could be measured over any thirty-six month time period. And so long as those six, six crashes occurred there, whether they were no fault or someone's fault, then it warranted a four-way stop sign. I would note, you know, probably in the past ten years, I'm, I'm going to ask Chief Lilly to get us an exact number on this, or Deputy Chief Lilly to get us an exact number on this, as he handles most of this. But I would estimate we've probably put up ten to maybe fifteen, uh, four-way stop signs within the village. A lot of those were over in the northeast quadrant of the village, which previously didn't have any when they were worn, just for legacy purposes. And I recommend that, I concur with Chief Lilly on this in the police department, but I would, on the opposite side, the effect of putting up too many stop signs is that people don't pay attention to them. There's a lot more people that roll through them and there's data that supports when you have too many stop signs, they increase the speed between those stop signs because they want to get there faster. So I think this board, and I know this, the police department is being very judicial in making sure that we follow these recommendations, specifically Chief Lilly and, or Deputy Chief Lilly and Chief King have said, you know, that they get many, many requests from residents. And if they don't meet these uniform traffic control device standards, unless there's extenuating circumstances, they don't come forward to this board. So I would just outline that. One thing I've also asked, uh, Deputy Lilly to do on all of these circumstances is to send letters out to the neighbors within a four-house radius of the intersection to let them know what's going on. On this one, on Elm and Walnut, he went out to approximately, uh, thirty households within that, within that area. Uh, he had two people that were against it, but after discussing, were against putting stop signs in. But after discussing with them, he got them to be within agreement. So everyone, people are in agreement there. And generally, when people aren't in agreement, it's because they think that there's going to be a traffic backup. Their driveways are going to get blocked by traffic and things of that nature. Uh, so that was the first matter at Walnut and Elm.
Luke, on that specific street, I can completely understand where somebody would say we need a stop sign.
Yep.
Do we have to talk to the food pantry about adjusting anything? I, I thought, didn't they submit, um, a traffic flow pattern or just some type of, like, uh, pattern for pickup?
And it was a pointed discussion at that point, uh, at the time that the food pantry was being approved, whether or not that that would be, uh, needed or recommended. The police department continued, uh, committed, uh, analyzing the intersection after operation and then continuing to watch the counts.
Okay.
But the food pantry really doesn't play a factor in this decision. It's based sheer, surely on the numbers of, uh, crashes.
Okay. Well, no, if we could just let them know in case it affects their traffic flow patterns during pickup times, just to make sure that they're aware of what's going on.
And to refresh the board's memory, as the food pantry ran in front of this board and planned commission, uh, they had specific drop-off or pickup times, I should say. We adjusted those pickup times so that they wouldn't coincide with times that school let out.
That's right.
In order to cut down on traffic in that area.
That's good. Okay.
But we'll ask Deputy Lilly to do that.
But they're coming down Walnut. They, they, they first go to, uh, the SDA church and then come down Walnut and then turn.
Yes.
Left on Elm.
Yes. Because they, they queue the cars up at the church.
Yes. Right. Right. And so then, and so now they'll be turning onto Elm at the four-way stop.
Correct.
Yeah.
Sounds safer.
I'm sorry, an elementary question, chief. So there's been six crashes in three years. Is six, the number of crashes that, that has happened, and is that the threshold that we take a look at? So there just happens to be six crashes and that's the threshold that triggers the traffic study for a stop sign?
Correct. That triggers, that triggers the review.
Okay.
Do we have to wait for six crashes?
That's what I was wanting to know.
And we're, you know, we talked about this on the safety, our safety meeting, and we're get, just kind of getting into this. But I mean, if there was five bad crashes, could we?
I mean, I've, I've witnessed and, and I know you and I have talked, and I know that you and Deputy Chief Lilly are working on some other intersections that currently have yield signs that go into non-stop sign intersections. Um, I've witnessed a handful, maybe not six, um, but wanted clarification on that number.
Okay, so there has been one or two occasions where it's been close to the threshold, but there's been other factors where the board has voted to, uh, install a control. And sometimes those are sightline distances and, and things of that nature. Other times, i- if there's a concern for an intersection, um, you know, it might require us to pull parking back from a corner to increase, uh, sightlines. It might, uh, include vegetation changes, you know, having public services clear out, uh, areas. So like the stop sign is probably one of the, uh, the final steps that we will look at.
Sure.
Because as, uh, trustee Stifler, uh, mentioned, that, that the more stop signs you put up, generally the, the lower your compliance level is with the, uh, with them overall. So you don't want to, you, you, there needs to be a standard. And I will indicate that with Elm, since this report was issued, it has gotten an additional accident. And most of those accidents, if you look at the reports, uh, you know, on Elm, it's people that come up to that intersection from the north or the south, and they make an assumption based on the nature of it being close to a hospital, that it is a four-way stop. So there is broadsides where they're just pulling out in front of another driver.
Plus, I mean, I have no data to support this, but just reasonable person. We have so many more people in our community that are just following their phone and not paying attention to actually the street of what's going on, whether they're Uber drivers, Grubhub drivers or whatnot. I just think that less people are focused on, you know, the actual signage out on the street and more on their phone.
Yeah. And the Uber guys, you know, they don't know the signage. They're not as familiar with the signage as the other people are. Can, can I address Hickory and Lincoln or?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I, I totally, uh, agree with putting a sign.
Well, be, I'm sorry, before we do that, and I just want, let me close out the matter.
Sure.
On, uh, on Elm and Hickory. Any other questions?
Elm and Walnut.
Yeah, Elm and Walnut. Uh, I'm sorry, are you here for stop signs this evening?
No, she's here for HBC.
Great. Thank you. Um, okay, so this first one, consent agenda for agenda item six C. Good. Moving on to six D. Onto six D.
Okay, so, uh, I mean, I, I'm all in favor of the Walnut and Elm. You know, you have some visibility issues that are, you know, that's, I think, causing all the trouble. Now, it's interesting you bring up Hickory and Lincoln. I, I, I drove by today. I don't usually drive in that area. But it struck me that the, the line of sight, uh, is pretty good in all, all directions. So this, this kind of sounds like what you're saying, Luke, about having too many stop signs if you put another stop, you're making that a four-way stop. So that's my observation on that.
I agree. Yeah. And I, I actually drive.
But I mean, if there's been six, you know, so now there's six accidents, I mean, people are blowing through the stop sign probably.
Yeah.
And honestly, and I know, chief, we've talked about this. Rob, I've talked about this with you. It's the no parking to the corner, especially when, um, you know, there's residential homes under construction. Those trucks park all the way to the intersection and there's no way to see around them.
Chief, when we have only a two-way stop in the village, right below the stop sign, do you, you have a small sign that says crossway traffic does not stop?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
But nothing for yield signs?
Nothing for yield signs.
That's a crazy area though, Luke. Like, I live right around here and a lot of the times, people just don't.
They don't know.
Each street is different.
Right. That's what.
And that, so the inconsistency adds to confusion.
Yeah.
So I appreciate it. I appreciate both of these.
People, yeah, we're not, and we're not going to alleviate this a hundred percent. There's going to be crashes.
No.
So with regard to Hickory and Lincoln, pretty much the same thing as what I said about, uh, Elm, Elm Street and Walnut. Six crashes within the past, six crashes in the past thirty-six months warrants a stop sign. Again, all neighbors have been notified around there. Nothing has been, no, no neighbors were against it. And I, I see you winces and kneel, and I'm somewhat like you. I'm somewhat hesitant in, in some of these because we're, every time we put up more stop signs, it increases the speed of traffic between those stop signs and.
Yeah, that's just what I noticed there. So, I mean.
Yeah. Chief, are there any circumstances where that, uh, manual on uniform traffic control devices says that a stop sign shouldn't be put up if there are so many crashes? Or are there any extenuating circumstances where someone was, you know, we don't count the crash when there was someone at fault?
No. No. It, it's just straight off crashes.
Just straight out crashes. Okay.
Michelle, what's the word in the neighborhood about this?
I mean, it, it's an interesting area because you can gun it from Burns straight to, you know, Washington. And it is confusing. Just, I mean, I, it's confusing. Cars don't know how to stop. Then you see them coming in on the feeder streets, north and south. And, I mean, a lot of times they just go because they think we are going to stop. So I, I think this is just, you know, my lay opinion. If somehow you could slow everything down just that much, it'll give everybody, you know, on the north and southbound areas, just a little, you know, breath to breathe before they hit the gas. I'm not using the right technical words, chief, but.
Uh, one other note, Deputy Chief Lilly did go, uh, block in east direction on that intersection, just polling residents. And, uh, to a person, everybody had indicated that it was in need of a, a four-way control. They were supportive of it.
Yeah.
It's a busy street.
So it's not just that they didn't object, they were supportive?
Yes.
Okay. Yep.
Well, I, I value the input from the people who live there.
Yeah.
Because I had an issue with, with where I lived and I felt like I was sign put in, so, yeah.
I agree too, but, uh, the police, I would emphasize, I think, what you're indicating, Neil, also is we need to be judicious about this. We cannot put a stop sign in every time a resident indicates they want one in front of their house. We've got to have, you know, at some point, it probably takes a kind of a, rather than an intersection by intersection, maybe a macro view of, of where they should all be.
I would just say, though, I'd advocate getting rid of more yield signs. We have two-way yields and driving on First Street up to town, it's a hail mary that you're not going to get T-boned by someone coming on Oak. And I see it all the time. And, you know, my neighbors are complaining, um, and it's dangerous.
Like a good thing to digest with our safety study too.
We're going to talk about that. Get rid of every yield sign.
Okay. All right. Uh, for agenda item six D, consent agenda for that one also?
Yep.
Okay. Which moves us to agenda item six C. Uh, and this is, this should be fairly simple. It's an ordinance amending section three dash twenty-one dash one of chapter twenty-one, which outlines valet services and licensing of the village code. Uh, after administering valet services for slightly under one year, because we approved this in January of two thousand twenty-five, staff is recommending a minor tax amendment to account for the exact definition of downtown, which is not currently included in the ordinance. Uh, the proposed text amendment would simply read as follows. Quote, "Valet parking services shall be permitted only in downtown Hinsdale, which for purposes of this chapter is the area comprising the B-two Central Business Zoning District of the village. Valet parking services shall be the accessory to a lawful business located in downtown Hinsdale, which business is operating under the premises where the valet parking services are provided." Very simple. Questions? None? Consent?
Consent.
Yep. Then moves us to agenda item six F. Um, and this is a resolution, uh, approving a preservation incentive certificate and authorizing a preservation incentive agreement for the property located at forty-two South Quincy Street. This request is for a property tax rebate and matching grant. Uh, the improvements include the construction of a rear addition onto a single, or an existing single-family home. Uh, and the property was approved for inclusion in the historically significant structures property list in May of two thousand and twenty-four. Um, you, you're going to say some things tonight?
Sure.
Okay, great.
You don't have to, Mal.
You don't have to, but just of your discretion, if you could come to the mic, if you have someone's, and then your name and, uh.
Sure. I'm Molly Monty. I'm a homeowner at forty-two South Quincy. Um, we bought our house in fall of two thousand eleven and at the time it was a two-bedroom bungalow modeled after the Sears style of home. Um, and, but it has some cute, unique facets like arched windows, the original arched doors, red door wood, and the original brown door behind it that has a stained glass arch to it, has some interior archways. It has the original, like, lever pulley system on the windows. So we're looking to weatherize and update the original windows, um, add the, uh, livable space, um, in the back and upstairs to fit my basketball-sized children. And eventually also add, um, turn our garage to enter off the alley, which is not part of the preservation, but is part of the permit application. So you might have seen that in there.
I agree. Homeowners do such a better job describing it than I do. So thank you very much.
I botched it the last meeting, so I, I was practicing.
Did you walk with the renovations?
Yeah. Yeah, a couple of administratums on this. The, this project is a hundred percent code compliance. There's no variance request here. Uh, the estimated cost for the work is a hundred and eighty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. Uh, the Historic Preservation Commission voted to approve a preservation incentive for a building permit fee waiver and the expediting process at their meeting on November fifth of this year. And that was a vote, a unanimous vote of five to zero. Uh, it also voted to approve and recommend to this board a property tax rebate and the matching grant. So on the property tax rebate, uh, the applicant expects to receive about thirty-four hundred dollars in savings over the five-year time period. And on the matching grant, um, we've approved, uh, a funding for fifty percent of eligible project costs up to a maximum of a ten thousand. And this would meet the ten thousand dollars. Um, so that would be the grant on this. And recall, many conversations we've had, that grant would not be provided until all of the work is done and reviewed by the Community Development Group. So questions?
Thanks for participating in this.
Thanks for offering it.
It's a, it's a really good program and we always give Bethany, um, the props that she deserves for, for being the, the architect behind this. But to really incentivize owners of historic homes to take advantage of, um, incentives so these homes can stay up for more generations. Um, so we're very thankful to you guys.
Thank you. And, uh, consent agenda for this?
Yes.
Great. So this will get approved at the next meeting, but there's no reason for you to show up unless someone from staff calls, which I doubt very highly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Molly.
All right. I think those are all the items under first read. That brings us to consent agenda. Um, one thing before we dive, dive into consent, I failed to mention that the landmark item that's currently listed on the consent agenda will be moved to a second read, um, and considered as a separate agenda item in the meeting. Uh, so it'll no longer be part of the consent agenda. And with that, I think we, uh, only have one item. And, uh, who reviewed, council, all right, trustee Pasima?
Yes, I had the, the virtual bill bag, uh, this time. So, uh, after talking with Carrie, found everything to be in order. So, uh, I moved to approve payment of the accounts payable for the period of November five, twenty twenty-five through November eighteen, twenty twenty-five, in the aggregate amount of four million, eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-four cents, as set forth on the list provided by the village treasurer, of which a permanent copy is on file with the village clerk.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Pasima?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Stifler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Banky?
Thank you. Consent agenda is approved. Uh, moving on to second reads, I'll entertain, uh, Chair Stifler to cover what was seven B.
Yep. So agenda item seven B is to approve an ordinance, uh, designating the R. Harold Zook Home and Studio, currently located at KLM Park as a local landmark. Uh, the building was relocated from three twenty-seven South Oak Street to KLM Park in two thousand and five. Back at that time, it was a very large community event. Uh, the applicant for this matter is the Hinsdale Historical Society. Uh, the buildings know, are notable due to their association with an important architect that provided meaningful contributions to the field and to the village of Hinsdale, and because the buildings represent a unique architectural design and style associated with R. Harold Zook. Uh, our packet does contain a great deal of detailed historic and architectural information on the house, including the interior floor plans, photographs of brief history and description of the Zook Home and Studio buildings. Additionally, at our last meeting on November fourth, we reviewed the material in detail and had a little history lesson. Uh, I would also note that pursuant to the village's, uh, codified procedures, the Historic Preservation Commission held a public hearing on October first, two thousand twenty-five, where it voted unanimously six to zero to recommend approval to this board for local landmark designation of the Zook Home and Studio. And with that, I would make a motion to approve an ordinance designating the R. Harold Zook Home and Studio as a local landmark, located at fifty-eight ninety-one South County Line Road in KLM Park, case number HPC seventeen dash two thousand twenty-five.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Why was it moved from a consent item to a second read? No?
Take it in a second.
Oh, okay.
Good. Um, okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Pasima?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
I'm recusing myself out of an overabundant.
I'm recusing myself out of an overabundance of caution, given that I currently serve as Board President for the Hinsdale Historical Society.
Trustee Stifler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Banky?
Okay, items approved. Thank you. Moving on to the next order of business, which is ACA, Trustee Postuma.
Yes, so, um, uh, this is Items 8A through 8G. This is levying property taxes for the 2025 fiscal year in the amount of $16.6 million and then abating the taxes for payments of six bond series, where there are alternative revenue sources in the amount of approximately $3.2 million. In October, as you may remember, we approved an estimated village net tax levy of a little over $9.4 million. And the library board approved their own estimated net levy of just a shade under $4 million, with a total estimated net levy of $13,423,367. And so now, as we're at second read, we are going to formally adopt the gross levy of $16 million. This includes all the different bond payments that we're obligated to pay. And then we will formally abate the six bond series where we've pledged an alternative revenue source. Basically, that's all the outstanding bond offerings, other than the 2019 one, which was included in the estimated net levy. And just to point out, you know, when Kerry did the presentation, she noted that, you know, we were financing all these things in a pay-as-you-go method without incurring any new debt. If you, if you look at all these bond series that, that were abating here, the last one was in 2021. So it's been four years since we've had a bond offering, which is, which is great that we've been able to have the, the revenue sources and the fiscal discipline to be able to, to finance things over the last four years without having to borrow more money.
And in '21, what was the use of proceeds on that bond offering? Sorry, should have asked ahead of time. Was that for the parking garage?
Uh, no, I think that was a year or two before that.
You can get back to me on that, I'm just curious.
We will get back to you. There was a series of resurfacing that we were doing.
In addition, we did issue debt for the parking garage.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, great. Then, um, again, as part of this formal motion, I will move to approve the ordinance for the gross levy. And then I also have to read a resolution.
I'm sorry, Trustee Postuma, is it, what's great about our budget document is it has everything you could want to have, answer to. So, I'm sorry, it was a refinancing of previously issued debt in 2021.
Oh, so.
Just cost savings.
So, so, so actually, 2019 was the last one then, is that right?
Correct, that was to finance projects in the, in the general fund.
Yeah.
Page 118 of your budget binder.
Excellent.
Very good.
Excellent. So, um, just, just to make sure, so I understand the process, can I, can I read all the seven motions and then, and then vote on all of them in the aggregate? Okay.
Yes, just please, please read them all verbatim.
Yes, I, I, I will do so.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna go get some water.
If you need to use the restroom. Uh, okay, well then I'll, let me proceed with the, with the various motions. So first, I move to approve an ordinance levying taxes for corporate purposes for the fiscal year of the village of Hinsdale, Illinois, commencing on January 1, 2025, and ending on December 31, 2025, in the aggregate amount of $16,641,122. Second, I move to approve a resolution abating the tax heretofore levied for the year 2025 to pay the principal of an interest on $2,710,000 general obligation refunding bonds, library fund tax alternate revenue source, Series 2013A of the village of Hinsdale, DePage and Cook Counties, Illinois. Third, move to approve a resolution abating the tax heretofore levied for the year 2025 to pay the principal of an interest on $2,025,000 general obligation bonds, Waterworks and Sewage System alternate revenue source, Series 2014A of the village of Hinsdale, DePage and Cook Counties, Illinois. Fourth, I move to approve a resolution abating the tax heretofore levied for the year 2025 to pay the principal of an interest on $5 million general obligation bonds, alternate revenue source, Series 2014B of the village of Hinsdale, DePage and Cook Counties, Illinois. Fifth, move to approve a resolution abating the tax heretofore levied for the year 2025 to pay the principal of an interest on $9,775,000 general obligation bonds, alternate revenue source, Series 2017A of the village of Hinsdale, DePage and Cook Counties, Illinois. Sixth, I move to approve a resolution abating the tax heretofore levied for the year 2025 to pay the principal of an interest on $20 million general obligation bonds, alternate revenue source, Series 2018A of the village of Hinsdale, DePage and Cook Counties, Illinois. And finally, seventh, move to approve a resolution abating the tax heretofore levied for the year 2025 to pay the, the principal of an interest on $2,655,000 general obligation bonds, alternate revenue source, Series 2021 of the village of Hinsdale, DePage and Cook Counties, Illinois.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Postuma?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Stifler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Banky?
All right, thank you. The item is approved. Thank you, Chair Postuma. Moving on to the next order of business is environmental and public services. Chair Burns.
Uh, okay, Item 6H is to approve a contract with Kluber Architects and Engineers to perform design engineering for the HVAC system in the memorial building in Village Hall. This is part of a very large and much-needed project, as the HVAC systems are well beyond their useful life, as they're dating back to 1965. You may recall at our last meeting, George Peluso provided details and photos of the existing additions at the memorial building. Previously, Kluber completed the preliminary engineering phase and issued a report stating that full replacement of the HVAC system is required. In their proposal, Kluber will be providing design development, construction documents, and procurement assistance. Kluber's preliminary report provided a construction estimate of $2.8 million to complete the HVAC replacement and an overall cost of $3.1 million. Due to the high cost and complexity of the project, staff recommends phasing the replacement work over four years. During that time, Village Hall will be able to remain open and costs can be spread over this time, although staff will have to be relocated occasionally while construction work is completed in the areas of the Village Hall. As for budget implications, $300,000 was budgeted in 2025 for the design engineering. Kluber's proposal was $236,000, which is $64,000 below budget. Any questions? I think not.
Well done. All right, seeing no comments, do we have a motion to approve that? Did you move that, Neil?
Sorry?
Did you move to approve?
Uh, no, I did not. Let's see, we're, uh, move to approve a contract for professional services with Kluber Architects and Engineers of Aurora, Illinois, for Hinsdale Memorial Building and Village Hall HVAC system design engineering in an amount not to exceed $211,080.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Postuma?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Stifler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Banky?
Thank you. Items approved. Moving on to Agenda, Agenda Item Number Nine, we do have one item under discussion, and that's the crosswalk enhancement at Ninth and County Line. So for context on this discuss, on this discussion item, it's a request for enhanced pedestrian crossings along County Line Road, one at Ninth Street, the other at Third Street, along with a review of a draft village policy that I believe was distributed to all trustees on whether, on when rectangular rapid flashing beacons, or RRFBs, should be installed. This was an item that originated from resident feedback and was reviewed from the Public Safety and Transportation Commission, which issued a positive recommendation at its October 29th meeting. Staff's analysis looks at both the locations themselves and how they fit in within the new draft policy. That policy, just for summary, outlines the conditions under which RRFBs are appropriate in Hinsdale, such as near schools, parks, and higher-volume collector, collector streets, and ensures consistency with the MUTCD standards and national engineering practices. Now, on the specific case of Ninth Street, staff is recommending the installation of a pedestrian-activated rapid flash beacon at that intersection with County Line. It's already a marked crosswalk and sees about 8,500 vehicles a day, so this would add safety during times when a crossing guard is not present. At Third Street, sidewalk and engineering changes would be needed before a beacon could be considered, but the continue, but the commission supported continued evaluation. So tonight is simply a chance to review both the location-specific recommendations, as well as the broader RRFB placement policy. Ask questions and provide feedback before anything comes back, before formal action. And with that, Chief, I know you were present at the meeting and helped draft this policy. Anything that you would add?
No, I think you outlined it perfectly. I mean, that's really the issues.
Okay, wonderful.
Is this the same kind of thing that we have at the crosswalk for KLM?
It's the crosswalk at KLM. If you recall, there's one at the north end of the park and there's one at the south end of the park. This would have, this would be similar to the one at the south end of the park, similar to the device at Oak Street at the hospital.
Yeah, the hospital.
Please.
Thank you so much. Um, I was, I've been working closely with some Oak School parents. And, and really why this has come about is our school population in Oak has exploded. I've been there 12 years and now we have gone from two classes per grade to three classes per grade, and a lot of children are coming out of the woodlands. And so they have to cross County Line to get to Ninth Street. And as you know, there's only one side of sidewalk on the Cook side of County Line. So it is, it is difficult and Ninth and County Line can get very busy, especially in the mornings and the afternoons with commuters that we see. And then the Third Street is actually really interesting. I live close by it and the elevation changes in the road. So it almost has a crest and so it's really hard to see if you're crossing by County Line and First. It's hard to see any cars coming up towards the hospital, given that elevation change. So I think that this will be really beneficial for pedestrians, not just children, but adults as well.
Thank you. And thank you for your advocacy on all this too.
I'm trying to remember what we talked about at our safety meeting, but is it, is it a hanging light over the, what's the?
Do you remember, Chief?
The, the we're recommending?
No, no.
No, it would be a, a beacon, yeah.
Yeah, there, there's a couple of photo examples on the first page of your packet. It would be, it would be the same type of standard that you see right out at Oak Street, at the pedestrian crossing mid-block by the hospital. So it's active, it's not activated unless a pedestrian hits the button.
Oh, okay, all right. Yeah, I forgot.
Crossing from like the nurses residence over to the hospital. Crosswalk there.
Just to be clear on the process here, so on the third page, we've got policy for placement. So this is a proposed policy that the village would adopt. Can we walk through how we obtained this policy or where it came from, the work that's gone into it?
It was created in-house after looking at federal source documents on crosses.
Because I thought it was just a discussion.
So the idea of the collector street or minor arterial street, there's really only two minor arterial streets in the village. And that designation comes from IDOT. If you go on their website, it shows you what the designation of each roadway is in the village. It's, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I believe it's a function of volume and then the purpose of the roadway. So certain, certain areas in County Line Road, certain parts of York Road, and then Chicago Avenue have the designation as a minor arterial or a major collector street.
Okay. So this policy right now would not permit one of these at the corner of Hickory and Elm?
Correct.
Yeah, if requested, it wouldn't come to this board.
Yeah, and I, I think very similar to some of the data that we reviewed from the Federal Transportation Commission, you know, the, they had pointed out at some point, almost similar to the discussion you were having earlier on stop signs, that if you, if you overplant these in the community, where you actually need them, you lose their effectiveness. So we definitely don't want to do that. And I think there's a function too, is, you know, in the neighborhood, they're a lot more obtrusive than an actual stop sign because you have this rapid flashing beacon that's in a, in a residential neighborhood. So I think, I think the board would be best to be judicious on where these go in the future. Now, it is, I think one of the reasons that the staff supported this is if you look at the average daily counts on our collector streets and our minor arterial, arterial streets, that South County Line Road has the highest volume, north-south traffic in the village. So, and, um, you know, to kind of build on what Trustee Braden indicated, not just is it, it's like a safe crossing route for students, but we're a little more focused on when there's no guard present. It appears to be like a pedestrian generator corridor. So you have a lot of crossings back and forth when there's no crossing guard present. So I think that is why Ninth and County Line is an excellent site for this kind of enhancement.
And does, who is the consultant we have on this KOLA?
So I don't know if they were involved in this particular effort, but KOLA is doing the, the broader study, yeah.
Should, I mean, what I want to make sure of, because when you sit in our seats and you have someone come and request something for safety, it gets approved. Because you don't want to be the one saying, yeah, we don't want stop signs there and then have an accident. What I want to make sure of is that as a board, we do, we have a good balance and it's not what's best. I'm not a professional in traffic, but how do I review this and make sure that we're putting this together so that it's solid, so that it only meets the places that really warrant, and I don't know what those benchmarks are. How best do we go, as trustees, go about determining those benchmarks?
We, we can send this policy to Mike from KOLA, who actually authored the report that's upcoming and ask him to, to comment on it.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and again, we're gathering discussion, so we might as well.
Yeah, because I want to make sure that we've got solid balance and by the time that it gets, any of these requests, by the time that it gets to this board, that it's truly warranted.
Correct.
So we're not forwarding this to D.A.?
No.
Just suggestions.
Procedurally, we would, yeah, get all the feedback.
Is a vote needed to put the beacon there?
Well, eventually, we would need to bring this as a.
No, the beacon, the beacon that is at Ninth and Oak, it is under the village manager's authority. We wanted, and it came out of the Safety Commission, but wanted to run it by the board to make sure that there was consensus in moving forward and understanding that there could be an appetite for other locations in the village. We wanted to say, this one's okay. And then moving forward, we're going to apply a policy, but it's a policy that the board would have reviewed.
Yep. And I, I just want to make sure that we take a very sharp eye on that policy and get it right.
Correct. So the police department will not be bringing any other ones to the Safety Commission until the policy has been approved.
Excellent.
I like having something else in our toolbox, though, that, you know, maybe it's not a stop sign. Maybe it is one of these beacons somewhere and that gives us some, you know, versatility.
And if a resident approached the, the commission and asked for us to enhance an intersection, I mean, this is only one type of enhancement. There's all sorts of other things that can be done with side engine striping.
Okay.
Along those lines, Chief, I was going to suggest, at the corner of Seventh and Madison, right near Madison School, there's a crosswalk and there's no crossing guard there. And they have this, I don't know what you call it, but it's, it's right in the middle of the street. It says, you know, "Stop when people are crossing." And, and that really gets the attention of, of cars. Cars actually stop at that. They think it's a stop sign, which that may not be good, but that's another way to do it. I don't know if that work, would work better at County Line. I don't, there may be too much traffic on County Line, but you know what I'm saying?
I think the volume on County Line would probably, especially in the morning when the cars are training and the gaps are relatively tight. I don't know if you, that, that particular sign on Madison would be visible enough.
Okay, well, just.
There's, there's a lot of traffic right there and, and, yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I, I crossed that many, many times, yeah. And it's, it's very busy and what happens is, you know, during the high-traffic times in the morning and in the afternoon, and actually, whenever school's getting out, it gets, you know, the, the people who are stopping at the light at County Line and 55th are often backed up a whole block. And then you have people who are picking up their kids from school and most of them are turning left. And it's a very busy street and, and hard to see, so that's, it's, it's, you know, you gotta, you gotta be careful whether you're a, a, a driver or a pedestrian.
I wonder what my ringtone is, by the way? No, not to make light of it. No, not to make light in a serious subject, so, any other comments on this? Okay, so, so what I'm hearing, we'll send the policy and get it reviewed by KLM just to get their, their input, I think that's a good idea. We want to be judicious in how we're approaching these things because we know it could be a slippery slope. From what I'm hearing, on Ninth Street though, it sounds like we do have consensus on that beacon, is that fair to say?
Yes.
Ninth, Ninth and County Line.
Yeah, that we're gonna do something.
Yeah, the beacon, yeah. And then on Third Street, I, it sounds like we have consensus to continue to study that, there's not a recommendation on that one yet. Yeah, but Ninth I think is, is good from the board's standpoint. Okay, wonderful, all right, I think you guys have the direction you need, wonderful, all right. Any other comments on discussion items?
We're talking to the guy rocks now, I'm so sorry.
No, you're good. All right, any questions in department and staff reports, I think those are included in the packet, anything anyone wanted to call out? Seeing none, I know we don't have any reports from advisory boards and commissions, that brings us to item 12 with, which is citizens petitions pertaining to any village issue. I don't see any public comment in the audience here, so moving on, that will lead us to trustee comments. Michelle?
Real fast, I just wanted to build on what you said Greg, for the snow shoveling program, it specifically helps seniors and those with disabilities. Students and scouts can volunteer and they will receive community service hours. For more information, there is an application that both the seniors and the students or the scouts would need to fill out. If there is still more information, they can call the village mainline and get help that way. Also, real fast, it was pointed out to me today that a year ago, this time on this day, we were outside celebrating the completion of our beautiful memorial building plaza and doing our dedication. Again, I always want to say thank you to everybody here for the time, love, and energy that they spent putting into that project and the continued attention that you give to this building and the significance that she has, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to you.
And Neil?
Happy Turkey to everybody.
Yeah, happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
All right, I'm reliably informed, we don't have anything under closed session, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All right, roll call please.
Justy Pashima?
Aye.
Justy Braden?
Aye.
Justy Siffler?
Aye.
Justy Fisher?
Aye.
Justy Burns?
Aye.
Justy Binkley?
All right, thank you, we're adjourned.[1052.82]